Visiting beautiful Park County stopped by the Vintage Beehive at their new location. One fifteen East High Street, Rockville, Indiana. We have antiques, vintage items, homemade, handmade, and handcrafted.
Okay, we're gonna get started. Janet, did you wanna go first, or do you?
I just came in case there were questions in regard to the additional appropriation that I had.
Oh, on the nurse business?
Yes.
Well, why don't we just wait, and then we'll, when we get to that, then I'll come back to you. How's that? Katie?
All good.
Right. Karen?
Seventy-three inmates this morning, ten are DOC, twelve thousand two fifty-six, seventy-eight in collections for the year so far. And we're averaging eleven thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars per month from DOC. And generating one hundred and eighteen thousand one sixty-seven so far for the year. Bridge Festival's going well, nothing too major yet. Deputies alone arrested over thirty people so far into it. Most of them were not festival-related, a few were. The state police conducted the shooting investigation back from August fifth. And the prosecutor cleared the deputy that was involved in that last Tuesday or Wednesday. Once they reviewed their report. And the final thing that I had was, we did have a deputy resign, so he's gonna work through the festivals his last day will be the eighteenth. So we'll be starting that process.
I heard your National Night Out was a big success.
Oh, yes, yes.
It was outstanding, wasn't it?
Yes.
Absolutely better than ever.
Wesley and Elise were out there for a while.
You're to be commended, that's an excellence.
Thank you. Yeah, what we're kinda thinking about maybe moving up, doing it in conjunction with Fair.
I was gonna say.
Maybe.
Bigger than the fair.
Oh, my lord. Just hate to say it, but it's just no comparison.
That's great.
Lots of people, lots of activities, lots of things for kids, everything you want, food.
Good deal. Cindy?
I think Roy tried to hit it with redevelopment.
Oh, okay. Okay, well.
Well, let him do that one.
He wasn't there either.
I wasn't there either, I didn't end up going.
Oh, good.
Well, she said.
Maybe I'll let Cindy talk then.
She said, well, maybe I'll let her talk.
Yeah, right.
She said she had enough, and I had something come up, so.
All right.
She said that, so why don't you just go ahead, you can just go ahead now.
Sure. So, in redevelopment, we received the support that evening to be the sponsor for a housing needs assessment for Park County. That will be funded by three different entities, so we also have an interlocal going on with that, that was also signed that night. So entities would be redevelopment commission using proceeds from selling Leon Bryant. And the town of Rockville in partnership with Park County is using some grant money that they received to help fund that. So we did the kickoff last week, and should be complete in March of twenty-two. Ending with the housing summit, which I'll give you more details later on.
Okay.
How many units in that housing down south market?
Forty. They're all three veterans, two baths with garage.
That's quite huge. But multiple levels, right?
Two.
Two. There will be five units that are ADA accessible.
Okay. Real public, so. I talked, I did speak with the auditor yesterday, and she promises to have the minutes available. At our November meeting, I think some of them were sent out in an email yesterday or something. So move on to the additionals.
I don't have a lot of color on most of it.
I asked, she talked to me something about, and I could probably answer a few questions if there are any, I don't know. She didn't give me a whole lot of information.
The MBA's restricted ones in bituminous, and I think it's maybe a correction from an error. One one we did earlier in the year. Cause the amount's the same and so on. Pre-trial diversion, prosecutor seeking nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars for body armor for, I assume, the sheriff's department. Or for the town, or for.
It's for the town of Rockville.
Town, okay. National Night Out, the appropriation, additional for National Night Out for seventy-four oh eight twenty-three. That's in addition to your four thousand dollar budget we do through the process, right? And the local health trust seeking five thousand dollars for the part-time nurse line. Janet's here, if she has anything she wants to say about that.
I was just going to say, I requested that amount because I did not know at the time that the request needed made whether, what exactly the pay was going to be for a nurse coming in, so I made the request for that. We are in the red in it at this point, just because I don't know what I'm doing, quite frankly. And this that was going to go into the red when I was doing payroll. So I was notified when it was two ninety in the red. We have since done a payroll since then, which was another four twenty-five. And we will have another payroll before her, end of her service that we would need to cover.
Well, we did not do one for Q three, if you all recall, because we told the nurse that, if you find supporting funding for keeping that position at the hours and the rate that it was, then, you know, we would consider it budget time doing that now. Things changed at that point, we did not do an appropriation for the additional hours, and we have not made a determination at this point for Q four if that hourly rate and the extra hours still exist. I don't have a problem with the appropriation, because, you know, it, like I said, we did not do it for Q three. We have done a couple of these already this year. So doing it is not a problem, but we need to make a decision on the rate and number of hours for that position for Q four and forward. Anyway, I'll move to approve the appropriations as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the additional appropriations, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Transfers in your packet.
Clerk for four oh one seventy-two. I believe this was for some monitors and so on in the court's office, I believe that's what he told me back when he asked about it. And had some room in that payroll line for that. The EMS postage to service contracts, that's for AccuMed, they're billing more, so the service, or the, the cost of that contract has gone up, but they are billing far more than they were. Prosecutor, thousand forty-three fifty from depositions to transcripts, I don't have any color on that.
But they, the auditor said that they're having to do more of those for some reason, and so he said it would be, she said it would be surprising if we don't see additional transfers coming up. It's just, it's just the way it happened.
The EMS, let's see, the next several, these and these ones in public safety are for the transmission in one of the ambulances. And I've got the number right, so I won't say which med it is. But this is moving a total of six thousand dollars into the ambulance vehicle maintenance line fifty-sixty-one. I'm commending sheriff for contributing a thousand dollars of that out of his, one of his equipment lines and that fund to help cause there.
Well, that was nice, though.
It was very nice.
Yeah. Next time I need something, I'll know who to go to.
So I'll commend him for that, and then there's an additional four thousand dollars transferred from additional salaries for, into the vehicle maintenance line in the general fund. And more into service contracts from what we talked about already, the AccuMed situation, so that's the transfers.
Move the proof.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, approve transfers, all in favor?
Aye.
Pay the jury.
Thank you, motion, pay the jury.
I second.
Motion's been made and seconded, pay the jury, all in favor?
Aye.
No reduction in funds, committee reports, Cindy's always covered the redevelopment, planning and zoning.
We met, biggest thing is the purple property up on Gary's, that's getting to be a real issue. Sheriff Parton's been out there several times, and supposedly dragged into court, but trouble is, I think they just keep threatening me, but nobody ever does anything, so he just keeps the key in the junk.
Seems like every day there's something new out there.
Oh, there is, yeah. He drags in more stuff, and they goes to jail, and, or goes to court, and they go, well, you know, we're gonna put you in jail and find you if you don't quit it. Well, he didn't quit it, and they don't put him in jail, and they don't find himself. There's no incentive, but anyway, that's pretty much the topic of discussion, and.
I think I did, I got involved in that too, finally.
Yeah.
I think a few weeks ago.
Yeah. One of the neighbors filed, I turned him in for I.D.M. And see if state does anything, admit anything done so far.
Okay. Court has security, did not meet solid waste.
Solid waste does not meet until the twenty-eighth.
Okay. Well, while we're on the topic of the solid waste one, Cameron Roy and I met with Jane, along with George Nicholas, who's on that board. And was there anybody else here?
I think it was it.
And to talk about why that they've been asking for an increase, and within our budget, we had basically voted not to allow an increase. When it boiled down to, she said that the recycled products that they have now are basically worthless, she used to, they could sell some to some, and it's basically worthless now, lucky to get somebody to even take them. They're expecting their expenses to go up, their haulers and all of that's costing more, and so that's why they're asking for the increase. We were adamant that, we felt like they were asking for a commitment beyond twenty-two. Jane disagreed with that, said that really they're only asking for monies for two thousand and twenty-two, and we basically agreed that we could probably go along with, their increase, requested increase for the twenty-two budget, they're free to argue for more money in twenty-three and twenty-four, but that there's no commitment by this county or the county council that that will happen, that we'll cross that bridge when we get there.
We also told her that they need to be having that conversation about proposing an increase for twenty-three sooner than, you know.
Right before budget.
Right before the budget time, cause then we're operating with little to no information at that point, so.
The other thing I suggested to them, and they have done, they have cut some of their other programs, but they need to be looked at again, we're funding stuff in the schools. They're running, they keep saying they're running out of money, well, they're gonna have to look at some other ways to either not turn the grant money over to schools if, at all possible, when their own budget is hurting, so there's just some things I think they need to look at. So anyway, well, that's the report from that, so.
Wasn't their co, their amount excess they've got right now a factor?
It was, it was, and they have, well, it's about eight hundred thousand, and she assures me that they're gonna be, even with this increase, why they're going to dipping into that. And what were they projecting then about? Was it down?
Down to six hundred next year.
Six hundred next year, and then another, there's another, lose about two hundred thousand a year.
So how much, how much do they spend in a year? What's their budget was? Oh, that's all right, that's fine.
No, it's.
Oh, we, we maybe got it.
No, we don't, I don't have that with me.
No, I don't.
She provided it, but Larry, I honestly don't remember.
I can't remember, Larry.
It was just two, two counties.
Yeah, it's just putting them in park now.
Their wells are built now?
She does have notes here, it says that the capital reserve is reduced between a hundred and fifteen and a hundred and fifty annually to cover program services and costs.
Some of the school stuff's required by statute for them, or at least outreach, and that's how they've done it now. You know, as we said, there might be to be some cutting back on that. They'll know that you need to do a bunch of programs in the school to tell kids to recycle. I think they're getting that a lot of other ways besides.
According to this, they've also downsized to one full-time staff member and one part-time assistant that works eight to nine hours a week.
And we assured her that, that it certainly that we, that it's well-used here, the recycling and the tox away day is well-used, and we appreciate the service, it's just, the, the cost, of course, is always comes into a factor of what we're paying for, and, but it's certainly a service that we want. It's easy to make the argument, it's keeping the trash out of the ditches, and we are hopefully helping the environment a little bit by recycling some of that stuff. But what you find out is, is a lot of that stuff that maybe they receive is not necessarily recyclable. Some of that plastic that gets thrown in there is not all recyclable.
Love doing it for the trash service.
So that's where we are on that. So I do have the new form, we asked for a new form, and it's in your packet, I think. If you will agree to fund it in, as fund the increase in two thousand and twenty-two, I will need to vote on that, and then I'll sign it if you're so inclined.
So move.
Motion's been made and seconded to grant this solid waste district their increase for two thousand and twenty-two budget, all in favor?
Aye.
Credit for budget adoption, new business, Roy has a letter somewhat reflecting what we did, so you go ahead.
Okay.
Should have a copy of that in your packet, I think.
Yeah, you should have that. The Park County Council wishes to provide an update on the review and adoption of the county budget for two thousand and twenty-two. The Park County Council remains committed to being diligent with the taxpayers' dollars. We continue to look at spending levels, trying to make prudent decisions to efficiently operate the county government while maintaining and improving the needed services to the county's taxpayers. Remain committed by, to keeping tax rates as low as possible to enable taxpayers to keep as much of their hard-earned dollars as possible, knowing that we all have limited means with which to operate. This being said, the council has made several difficult decisions this year which have not been taken lightly. In two thousand and twenty-one, the story of the year continues to be the pandemic. Council has continued to work in lockstep with those leading the county response to COVID-nineteen. Council has appropriated needed funds for equipment, technology, and infrastructure to best ensure the safety of all. We appreciate the efforts of our public safety and health personnel, and thank them again for all they do. While in two thousand and twenty-one, the county realized lower revenues from some significant sources as a result of the pandemic. Those revenues for two thousand and twenty-two have returned to normal. The council found it important to not reduce critical spending during two thousand and twenty-one and utilize some safe reserves to maintain needed funding for roads, public safety, and other priorities. Revenue forecasts for twenty-two are improved over two thousand and twenty-one, and we will look, we will again work to build some of that reserve back up to have available for the next downturn. In the spring, the council granted four abatements for expansion, both in real property and personal property to Scott Pep products. Scott Pep has become a leader in their field and a valued community partner with their growing operations. The abatements reduce their property tax burden for the investments made at the former Shopco site, as well as new equipment at their existing site across from the county fairgrounds. Council continues to focus on improving broadband access for the county. Second application for exemption from personal property tax was filed and approved by Bloomingdale Home Telephone Company for expansion in their service area. Joint was awarded and has been building three next-level connections projects in Niceville, Judson, and Bridgeton. Endeavor has been working on expanding service to the Raccoon Lake area, having completed the Rocky Fork Lake project. The county broadband community continues to foster growth in this area and is having regular conversations about what we can do to initiate and complete more projects in the county. We anticipate a significant investment from the American Recovery Plan Act, in quotes, ARPA, funds to further increase investment in this important service for our citizens. In July, the council took a huge step in increasing salaries for our highway department employees. This, the salaries in this department were found to be lagging significantly behind other counties and state workers. This investment was made to slow or reverse the drainage of qualified employees in this department, and to better entice qualified applicants. These increases were significant, helped close the pay gap in this department, and has helped improve staffing levels. Several county departments have been actively seeking grants to extend the local tax dollars further, from emergency management to highway and everywhere in between. The employees of county government have not relented in finding more and more funding sources to extend allocated dollars further and to make more improvements and investments in their departments. September second, the council reviewed the budget request for two thousand and twenty-two. It is important to note that many department heads came to the council with flat or lower budget requests than they were currently receiving. Considering the still uncertain economic climate with which we are navigating, this was specifically noted and appreciated by the council. Careful review and consideration, the council anticipates the following highlights in the two thousand and twenty-two budget. The total anticipated county budget for two thousand and twenty-two is seventeen million four hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. This is a seven point two percent increase over the two thousand and twenty-one budget. The council declined an increase in county employee insurance costs for two thousand and twenty-two. After significant and unexpected increase in late two thousand and twenty of nearly twenty percent, the council felt it responsible to not increase allocations to this. County employee health insurance is the largest cost in the county budget, and this single cost accounts for twenty percent of the total county budget. The Board of County Commissioners will be responsible for any needed adjustments to the insurance plan to accommodate this funding level. One thousand dollar per year salary increases for all full-time county employees. Five hundred dollar per year increases for part-time salaried employees. The permanent part-time hourly rate was increased from twelve fifty to twelve seventy-five per hour, and the highway department hourly rate was increased by fifty cents per hour. Dispatcher salaries were increased by thirty-five hundred dollars to equal jail officer salaries. County council member salaries were increased by two hundred and fifty dollars per year, and the county commissioner salaries were increased by five hundred dollars. The council committed to granting an additional two thousand dollar bonus to public safety employees from the ARPA fund. This funding will be included in the normal payroll cycle and is subject to approval by the Board of County Commissioners. Funding for the eligibility of jail officers and dispatchers to receive overtime compensation instead of compensatory time. The Board of County Commissioners will have to codify this policy. Continuation of years of service compensation for full-time county employees. This additional compensation is an important benefit to our loyal civil servants and will cost approximately one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Continuation of a stipend system for county sheriff's deputies that rewards merit deputies who achieve higher levels of training and use that training to teach their fellow officers. County highway funding of five million four hundred and sixty-three thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars, an increase of over fifteen percent year over year. This is over thirty-one percent of the total county budget. The council continues to use funding from other sources to supplement gas tax revenues while holding a reasonable reserve in the highway department funds. The county highway department continues to apply for and secure matching funding from the Community Crossings Matching Grant Program, allowing them to accomplish more work in county roadway system with less impact to local taxpayers. Two thousand and twenty-two funding for an ambulance remount, replacing an eighteen chassis and ensuring this vehicle's ready and able to service the citizens of the county for years to come. Continued utilization of user fee-supported funds to help offset the burden on tax-supported funds. The county continues to maintain a cash balance in all funds, as well as a rainy day and other funds that are available for unforeseen circumstances. As evidenced by the two thousand and twenty-one budget, it is imperative and responsible that the council continues to hold a reserve to be utilized as appropriate. Our work will continue as the budget's submitted to the state for approval. Until we receive a response from the Department of Local Government Finance and more firm revenue forecast, we may have to make adjustments, and none of this is final until that time. Council's taken the opportunity to make significant investments in the county government in the last several years. These investments, along with the preservation of revenues, have enabled the council to better weather the storm caused by the COVID-nineteen pandemic. We continue to remain very observant of the overall economic situation and will remain so. The future is uncertain, but through the efforts of the employees of the county government, we believe that we will be able to weather this storm with as little negative impact as possible. The overall fiscal situation of the county is stable, and the county council is committed to maintaining that condition. The council wishes to thank the employees of the county government for their hard work, efficiency, and diligence in living within their means. Your efforts are noticed, much appreciated by the council and the taxpayers of Park County. Closing, we remain committed to operating a county government responsible to taxpayers of the county and efficient in providing the services with which we are responsible in these challenging times. Sincerely, Park County Council.
There you are. Beautiful, excellent.
That explained it pretty well.
Um, that's you, I didn't, I thought I printed out enough Form 4s for everybody, but I didn't, so I apologize for that. Grabbed my folder that I did two weeks ago, and didn't look at it before I grabbed it this morning.
Well done for a Purdue grad.
Yeah. I don't know, things on my record in the last few weeks.
You're on, Tim, that's your book.
You just take me off, isn't it?
From that, you, we, and the tax-supported funds that will be adopted, or be approved by the DLGF, it was sixteen million sixteen thousand five hundred and eighteen dollar budget. The balance of the budget is in the, or the home room funds, so. At this point, the tax rate we will submit is, is point five thirty-six nine. That should come in, if my math is correct, and what will actually be approved will be around a forty-six to forty-seven cents.
That's almost a flat rate.
That's almost flat. I mean, it's essentially flat. I mean, you're talking hundreds, thousands of cents difference there. From what was adopted and approved last year, or what was approved last year. The reason that it's higher is, of course, we submit high in the debt levy, and we submit high in the general fund levy, and they knock those down to where they end up being. And we also submit high in the cumulative, so the rate doesn't look good, but it'll come in somewhere real close to that.
It's gonna be a flat rate, but with the increased income.
Oh, we had, yeah, obviously an increase in levy at four point, what is it, four three, I think, right? And then, of course, the A.V. was up close to twenty million, so.
That's what it is. That allows that.
That allowed that rate to stay, stay flat. That helps with tax cap situations, you know, you don't end up losing that from the tax caps, the taxpayer sees a relatively stable bill, which is what we really also would look like.
Okay.
Any questions? All right, I will move to approve the ordinance two thousand and twenty-one dash zero five, which is the two thousand and twenty-two Park County budget.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt the two thousand and twenty-two budget, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll be passing around signature, and then you need to mark how you voted.
Correct.
As well. Well, I tell you, I already were doing a couple of copies.
Just in case.
You're trying to take them too, it's a give and take today, wouldn't you?
Is there anything else?
Mine, nothing.
Anything else, Larry? Thank you for the prayer, that was a nice one.
Take some, take some, folks, 'cause to be honest, I haven't had one in forty years, I just don't eat them really.
Then you make them all the time.
Then you make them all the time, but take, take some. I'm not going back to the shack.
No, re-try. So you will be in contact with the auditor about uploading this, and tell her we'd like an email when she has completed that.
That has to be, I don't know if you have access to the gateway, you may have to, you may have to send, you have to upload that, um, before she can see it.
Okay.
Hold on.
Yeah, I think so.
Most of you do.
Okay, thank you.